Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the Longmont Planning and Zoning Commission, June 18th, 2025, regular meeting. First item is roll call.
Vice Chair Poland.
Here.
Commissioner Lang.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Wang.
Here.
Commissioner Saunders.
Here.
Commissioner Earl.
Here.
Vice Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next is land acknowledgement statement. We acknowledge that Longmont since on the traditional territory of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, Ute, and other indigenous peoples, we honor the history and the living and spiritual connection that the first people have with this land. It is our commitment to face the injustices that had happened when the land was taken and to educate our communities, ourselves, and our children to ensure that these injustices do not happen again, as adopted by the Longmont City Council, July 13th, 2021. Next item is communications from Planning Director Grant Penlin.
Good evening, members of the Commission. Vice Chair, I'm just gonna actually hand it over to you. We have some special guests this evening, prior commission members that we would like to acknowledge, so I'll turn it over.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead, and we do have some prior commissioners who are here today in attendance, and we would like to acknowledge them for their service to the city. And we do have a little certificate for them, and I'm gonna go through these one at a time. I'm gonna go through them in order from least time served to most time served, so that it's kind of generic. It's easier to follow. No, it's a way to do it. First one is Matthew Popkin. And if you will please come up here and then stand in front, and then at the end, I'll present everybody what their certificate. And I think there's probably gonna be a picture. Is there gonna be a picture for this? No? Okay. It says, and this will be for everybody, "In recognition of your service to the Planning and Zoning Commission, this certificate is issued by the City of Longmont and the Planning and Zoning Commission." Commissioner Popkin served in 2023 and 2024 before he moved to the city council. He is a very passionate person. Actually, I do have some notes here that I've written down. You know, he stepped right in. He was very, he was not shy in the beginning. He stepped right in, was able to state his opinions, and he did bring to, bring to fore some of the issues that were confronting us and kind of challenging some of our, the ways we handle things and some of the thoughts on things. And as I said, he's very passionate, and we appreciated his input on the commission. And thank you very much, and we were sad to see you leave to the city council, but doing a good job there. Next is Anna Lukasha. She has served since 2018. She was first an alternate and then became a permanent member on the commission. She does have a passion for transportation, especially for walkability, and she brought that to the commission. And she was also the person who brought to us to enact the land acknowledgement statement. We appreciate all the efforts that you made with these, for the city, and we appreciate that all. The next person on the list I have is Commissioner Flake. She is not in attendance today, but we want to thank her. She's been on the commission since 2015. She served two terms, and once again, she brought a passion. She brought a knowledge of development codes and planning, and she was very helpful to the commission. And the final person that I'm going to announce here is Commissioner Tetteh, if you can please come forward. Now, it says here 2015, but I believe 2011. I think I remember seeing a news article from 2011 that had your name in it for the planning and zoning. So I'll say he's been like a bedrock. He's been a steadying influence on the commission. I think he's always been at, right beside me throughout the whole thing. Appreciate all the inputs that he's had. He's very knowledgeable about the local people, and he represents the views of the public very well. So I want to thank all the commissioner, former commissioners who came here today, and I'm gonna go ahead and give you guys your certificates. This is a public meeting, so the next item is public comment. This is for items that are not of quasi judicial nature and are not coming in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We do have one person signed up, Sharon O'Leary. Okay, so you'll be, we'll put you on that part. So I've opened up public comment. This does allow anybody else who would like to come forward. You don't have to have signed up, pre-signed up for it. But seeing nobody come forward, I'll go ahead and close out the public invited to be heard. Next is approval of minutes. The first is the March 19th, 2025 meeting minutes. Do we have any comments? Any motions? Commissioner Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have moved to approve the March 19th, 2025, meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Jane, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Lang.
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Poland.
Aye.
Commissioner Saunders.
Aye.
Commissioner Earl.
Aye.
Chair, that passes six to zero.
Thank you very much. Next is approval of the April 23rd, 2025, meeting minutes. Do we have any comments? Do we have any motions? I have Commissioner Jordan.
I motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? I will second it. Let's go ahead and take a vote.
Commissioner Lang.
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Poland.
Yes.
Commissioner Saunders.
Yes.
Commissioner Earl. Vice Chair, that passes six to zero.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to public hearing items. The first item is the Horizon Park Shopping Center replat G preliminary plat. Principal Planner Jennifer Hewitt-Epperson presenting.
Thank you, Acting Chairman Poland, and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't know a lot of you here, so it's been a while. Jennifer Hewitt-Epperson, Principal Planner in Planning and Development Services. I'm here to discuss the Horizon Park Shopping Center replat G preliminary plat. So this particular property is roughly 25 acres. It is the existing shopping center that contains King Supers, Murdochs, the Ark Thrift Store, as well as Outlots occupied by Take Five Oil Change, Noodles &amp; Company, Red Silo Coffee Roasters, and the King Supers fueling station. The UC Health Urgent Care Parcel at the corner of 21st and Main is not part of this particular plat, proposed plat. So this is on the west side of 287 between 21st and 23rd. So this proposed preliminary plat will facilitate creation of new legal parcels for pad sites for a total of nine parcels in the shopping center. Approval of a preliminary plat prior to recording of the final plat is required pursuant to Section 15.02060 E1 of the Land Development Code because more than three new lots are being created. We are just over that threshold with, with this particular proposal. Please note that I did misstate the number, the total number of lots for this property with the staff report. There are nine total lots. I stated there are eight, so I do apologize for that, that error. Essentially, this proposed subdivision will enable fee simple ownership of all the existing and future commercial pad sites within the Horizon Park Shopping Center. All necessary easements would be dedicated as part of the final plat. There's actually no new development or redevelopment currently proposed. They're simply drawing lot lines at this point, which is why there was not a transportation study or any, a lot of this, the items that we would normally require for preliminary plats and other development applications. There's no development proposed at this time. Any future development would be required to go through appropriate development review processes and would be subject to the North Main Street corridor development standards under that mixed-use corridor zoning district. So proposed plat, just for your reference, there would be six outlots fronting on Main Street. That would include the fueling, the existing fueling station, the Take Five, the Noodles &amp; Company, the Red Silo Coffee, plus two additional pad sites that don't currently have any development on them adjacent to Main Street, as well as one adjacent to 21st Avenue. Two parcels for the main shopping center. So basically, north would include, you know, King Supers and Murdochs and such, and south would be everything else. So the Take Five and the Noodles &amp; Company were already on their lots. There previously, there currently are a couple of outline, of the pad sites that are parceled off, but the vast majority of the site is under essentially the larger lot configuration. So with that, staff found that this is consistent with Invision Longmont. It does meet the review criteria for all application types. It meets the review criteria for preliminary subdivision plats, and staff recommends approval with no conditions. And with that, the applicant, Amy Gray, from Kimco, is here to, as well, and we will both be standing by for any questions.
Thank you.
The applicant won't be giving a presentation, so we're, we're questions only.
Okay. We'll open it up for questions from the commission. Oh, public comment. Oh, sorry. Oh my goodness. This is a public hearing item. Let me go back to my screen. Next thing we do is open it up for public comment. Jane, nobody signed up for this? If anybody would like to speak to this item to the commission, you do have your time now. We will give you five minutes to state your information. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll go ahead and close out public invited to be heard for this public hearing item, and open up two commissions from the commission, questions from the commission. Commissioner Wang.
Thanks. To me, this seems pretty straightforward and simple. There's not a lot of, you know, it looks like it's just drawing a couple, to me, drawing a couple of lines on the map and Bob your uncle, right? But.
That's it.
Yeah. But I noticed that it took about three years between the neighborhood meeting and to where we are today. Was there multiple rounds of reviews? And what were the, some of the biggest challenges or concerns that, you know, staff had with this particular? I mean, why did it take so long?
Essentially, it took a long time because there was a lot of turnover on the applicant's team. So there were a number of project managers on the applicant's team, so it took a little bit of time. It took a lot more time than we would normally see for a project that's this simple. So that's it. Really, the main, and there really weren't any huge staff concerns. It was a matter of making sure the necessary easements were gonna be, were put in place and, you know, were located in the right areas. So.
Okay. And that probably leads up to the second part. On Lot 8, there was a little strip between the UC Health and the Lot 8. I mean, was that part of the easement then for that little strip?
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Is there a reason for that little strip? I thought, you know, one of, a button next to the adjacent lots.
That, oh, that little finger right there. I am not certain why that is there. I believe it is essentially to allow for access. So, you know, our engineering reviewers didn't have any concerns with it. Amy, is there any reason that you're aware of? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you already answered this question, but I'm gonna ask you anyway, just 'cause I want to make sure I'm 100% clear on this. There are several lots that are divided here that are not developed today. The plat doesn't influence whether they're developed or not. The, you know, the owner of this property could choose to develop them in accordance with all the code today without dividing them into separate lots, correct?
Correct. This preliminary, this plat is being proposed essentially so that the property manager, the property owner, can sell the lots in fee simple versus doing ground leases.
Okay. No, no impact on if they're developed or not, or complying with anything. It's just.
Nope.
It's just the ownership piece.
It's just the ownership piece. And, you know, the lots, the lots were sized in a way that they could be developed in accordance with the land development code.
Perfect. I thought that's what you said. I just wanted to make sure. So thank you.
Yes.
Do we have any other questions? Do we have anybody who would like to, oh, Commissioner Lang.
Thank you, Chair. When you say in fee simple, what, I'm not familiar with that term.
Basically, the lots can be sold. They're creating legal lots that can be sold versus a portion of the property that would be a ground lease, which is what you also would see, you know, you also see frequently in commercial properties. So basically, creating new legal lots that, you know, could potentially be sold to a specific, you know, commercial owner, pad operator, developer.
So currently, is there a single owner for this entire?
Correct.
Chunk?
Mm-hmm.
So King Supers, Murdochs, they all lease from the existing? Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
Commissioner Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adopt PZR 2025-4A, approving the recommend, approving the preliminary plat.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second? Commissioner Saunders.
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further questions, comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move to a vote.
Commissioner Lang.
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Poland.
Yes.
Commissioner Saunders.
Yes.
Commissioner Earl.
Yes.
Vice Chair, that passes six to zero.
Thank you very much. Are we okay to move to the next item? Oh, thank you. It's been a while. Agenda item 7A, Horizon Park Shopping Center replat G preliminary plat. Appeal process announcement. This item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any agreed party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by the city council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period. The appeal period begins Thursday, June 19th at 8:00 a.m. and ends Wednesday, June 25th at 5:00 p.m. and ends Wednesday, June 25th at 5:00 p.m. Are we okay to move forward? Okay, let's go ahead. Next item is Item 7B, Request for Variance to Land Development Code, Section 1504040 C1B1, to allow to existing accessory structures, et cetera, et cetera. Principal Planner Nathan Jones Meyer.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you mentioned, my name is Nathan Jones Meyer. I'm Principal Planner with Planning and Development Services. And again, as you've mentioned, the item that I'll be presenting tonight is a variance related to an accessory dwelling unit located at 25th Avenue. Specifically, this variance request is to Land Development Code, Section 1504040 C1B2, to allow an existing structure to be converted into an approximately 880, 98 square-foot accessory dwelling unit and to exceed the maximum allowed by the Land Development Code by approximately 470, 494 square feet. The property is located at 25th Avenue. It's located on an approximately 0.12 acre lot. That lot was originally platted as part of the Longmont original plat. It's also located in the historic East Side neighborhood. There are two structures located on the property. The primary structure is currently used as a residential, single-family dwelling. It's approximately 808 square feet. According to our records, it was constructed in approximately 1910. There's also an accessory structure that's currently being used as a garage. This is the structure that's proposed to be converted to an ADU. That structure is approximately 572 square feet. And according to our records, it was built at some point before 1985. Here we have the Invision Longmont Comprehensive Plan. The image on the right is the future land use, shows the location of the future land uses as denoted in the comprehensive plan. The subject property is identified here in a red square with the arrow pointing to it. The future land use for this property in Invision Longmont is the single-family neighborhood future land use. As part of that future land use, it's intended to consist primarily of single-family detached homes. Secondary uses can include an ADU as long as they fit within the scale and intensity of the surrounding uses. And here also, we have the zoning district. Again, the image to the right is the zoning districts with the subject property identified in red with an arrow pointing to it. It's currently zoned residential, single-family. According to Land Development Code, the residential, single-family zoning district is intended also for primarily single-family detached dwellings located on medium to larger lots. ADUs are a permitted by right accessory use. So by right, in this case, means that typically, an ADU does not require additional approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission or a city council as long as it can meet all of the development standards of the Land Development Code. Those standards are listed here in LDC, Section 1504040 C1, standards applicable to accessory dwelling units. And specifically, the proposed ADU could not meet this C1B2 standard that states that accessory dwelling units shall not exceed one-half of the finished above-ground floor area of the principal dwelling unit because the existing structure is 572 square feet and the primary structure is 808 square feet. It exceeded, the existing structure exceeded the maximum allowed size of the ADU. So any conversion of that structure to an ADU would require approval of a variance to this standard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. As part of this variance application, we also reviewed, or city staff also reviewed a site plan. Here we have a snip of the, of the proposed site plan. This just shows the location of the primary dwelling, residential dwelling unit. You can see it fronts on Fifth Avenue. And then the existing garage, which is proposed to be converted to an ADU, it fronts on Martin Street. As you can see here, there is no proposed expansion of the building footprint. Here we have the existing elevation of the structure. So you'll see that it's a structure that's constructed out of brick building materials. There's a pitched roof, and then there are two existing garage doors that serve as the entryway to the garage. Here we have some of the conceptual elevations. So this is what the redesign of the facade of the structure would, would look like if approved. The proposal, so the image on the top left here shows the eastern elevation. That's the elevation that would front on to Main, Martin Street. As you can see, they're going to, the proposal is to enclose the two garage doors, include a few windows, and then a window in the pitched roof. It also includes a proposal for some fenced area along the entrance, to screen the entrance of the ADU. The image on the bottom right is the southern elevation. So that's the elevation that would face the backyard of the primary dwelling unit. I mean, you can see here that they're proposed, the applicant has proposed bay windows. And then the entrance to the ADU would be located along the southern entrance, the southern elevation. Here we have the conceptual floor plan. So there are two proposed levels. The main level would consist of a living room and dining room and then a kitchen area, as well as a bathroom and a laundry room. And then it would connect to an upstairs loft area by a spiral staircase. When we were doing our analysis, we, city staff made the determination to include both the square footage of the main floor and the additional loft where the sleeping area would be, to include all of that square footage in the total, the total calculated square footage of the proposed ADU. So that 898 square footage, square feet that we mentioned earlier, that includes both the floor, the downstairs floor area and the upstairs loft. Public notice was sent for this public hearing on, so mailers were sent on May 16th. Signs were also posted on the property on May 16th, and notice in the newspaper was published in the Longmont Times Call on June 11th. Variances are considered a major development application, which means that they're subject to both the approval criteria of 1502055 or few review criteria that applies to all application types. They are also subject to the approval criteria for variances in 1502060. For the sake of time here, I'm not going to go through each individual approval criteria as part of our staff report. We did include staff analysis of each approval criteria. We looked at all the different approval criteria to determine whether or not we thought the request met the standard for approval. So we went through all the review criteria for all types and then specifically for variances. Any approval of a variance must meet, all, must show that it meets conformance with all of the approval criteria for a variance. So in our analysis, as you can see in the staff report, we did find that it met the approval criteria for variance. And so we recommend, staff recommends approval of the proposed variance. That concludes the staff presentation. The applicant has a quick presentation as well where they'll go through some more of their design choices and present why they feel like they meet the approval criteria. I'll come up at the end to answer any questions related to the staff analysis. I know that there are quite a few approval criteria, so I also have a few slides at the end if you all would like to see them to talk about the specifics of those approval criteria. So with that, hand it over to the applicant, if that's okay?
Hello, my name is Jeff Van Sandvik. I'm an architect with Lodestone Design Group. We've been working with Susan, the property owner, on this project for a little while now. As Nathan said, I don't have a complicated presentation here, but I did want to be able to run through sort of the design for the ADU, kind of give you an idea of why we made some of the choices we did, and also, you know, push back just a little bit on the square footage calculations that have been presented. Totally understand why they're shown the way they are, but I think it would be helpful to explain a little bit about what that loft actually looks like. Site plan, obviously, we already looked at in Nathan's presentation. ADU is on the right. The main level layout of the space is pretty efficient. It's actually intended as a studio apartment in and of itself. We've got the kitchen on the south side with the large window looking into sort of a shared yard condition with the primary residence. Bathroom is on this level, closet's on this level, and then open space for dining, living area, and potentially sleeping area. And then upstairs is that loft. The loft area is spanning the full width of the structure for simplicity of construction and covers a little over half the footprint from east to west so as not to lower the ceiling and the main floor too much. It is actually a fairly small structure. Existing elevations and proposed elevations for the building, we can come back to. But essentially, our goal is to work within the existing structure. So I think it's a fairly straightforward comparison between what we have there today and what's being proposed. We're not actually changing the mass, the shape, the form, and not even doing that much to the glazing on the structure beyond what's looking back into the primary yard. This is a section through the building. As you can see, the floor elevation of that loft is right at the plate height, the top of the wall, masonry wall. We're down about six inches from the top of the masonry wall. That's really as low as we could set it and still have clearance for the bathrooms and the closet and stuff that's underneath it. The loft itself, at the very peak of that roof, is just over seven feet tall and at the edges on the two sides is right around six inches. By definition of the building code, there's actually no habitable space on that level. The habitable space is defined as space with ceiling greater than seven feet. Or for a slope ceiling section, it has to average greater than five feet. And none of that actually applies on this level. So from a building code standpoint, the loft is not considered to be floor area. Unfortunately, I don't know if unfortunately, but as the land use code is written, there's no definition of floor area. So really, anything we call a floor, we count as floor area per, I guess, this discussion. So, and from our point of view, it was never really thought of as, as floor area, and we were looking at this as essentially a 576-square-foot ADU. I think that's a fair interpretation and a fair classification for what we've actually proposed. I think the other thing that would be worth just sort of stressing here is, is that, that given the limited changes that we're proposing to the exterior of the structure and the relatively simple use we've proposed for the interior, the variance, well, I guess, the variance criteria that we're required to meet, from our point of view, it's kind of just breaks down to sort of first, do no harm. So, you know, we're not, we're not proposing a larger structure. We're not proposing more intensive use than the code would otherwise allow in terms of a residence, accessory residence. And I think to that end, we're protecting the existing neighborhood. We're protecting the neighbors immediately next to, to this property with, with no further kind of encumbrance than what the existing structure already has. And then sort of the second part of the review criteria, to me, essentially boils down to, is this the least modification that would provide relief? I think it is. Again, we're not changing the footprint. There is the potential that you could develop this as a residence and sort of carve out a portion to stay under the 404-square-foot limit by taking a piece and making it something different. That's pretty impactful for such a small building. And I think the staff report also notes that there'd be significant enforcement challenges to doing that in terms of what some future owner might decide to do with recombining those spaces. So from our point of view, this, this is definitely a very minimal approach. And I think also, yeah, it's sort of the minimum that can provide relief for what we're trying to achieve. Happy to answer any questions and hand it back to Nathan.
Nathan, you said you had a couple things you wanted to present.
No, I do not. That's the end of the staff presentation and the applicant's presentation will be available as well for any questions that you may have after we do the public hearing.
Sure. Public invited to be heard, yes. This is a public hearing item. As such, we'll go ahead and open up public invited to be heard. This is a chance for the public to go ahead and make comment on this. You get five minutes. We do ask that you go ahead and give your name and your address for the public record. Did we have anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and Sharon O'Leary.
Good evening, P and Z Board. Sharon O'Leary, 534 Emery Street, co-chair of the Historic East Side Neighborhood, which this home falls into. First, I want to talk about process. We were concerned that because of this process, the process allows everything to go through. The application goes through, the first hearing happened. Many people from our neighborhood sent letters into the planning department expressing concern because the applicant lives in California. That has been verified by Boulder County Records and by talking to the present renter, who said her landlady lived in California. So the process allows everything to go through, and then you can okay the variance, and then this ADU can be built for an out-of-state person. Seems a bit unfair. Our neighborhood tried to get on the docket with planning and zoning for a conservation overlay zone, and we had to wait months because the calendar's so full. So we're filling the calendar just because of process. Instead of verifying in the very front end that someone lives out of state, out-of-state people are getting priority over in-town people. So let's say you okay this variance and the property owner moves in, the variance is passed, property owner moves in, ADU is built, and then she decides, hmm, I don't want to live here. Then she gets to sell that piece of property for an extreme profit because now this tiny little house on the corner of Fifth and Martin Street has an ADU in the back of it. And she never really had to live here, okay? Say she lives here. Great, we have a new Longmont resident. On the south side of Third Avenue is Rogers Road, where there are multiple apart, multi-story apartment buildings. The amount of traffic flow that is going to be now going in front of her new ADU and home is going to be astronomical. Some of those people might choose to go onto Ken Pratt, but I'm going to guess, just watching, living in the neighborhood, most people go straight through to Ninth to avoid traffic. So then she decides after living in her new ADU that it's not as glamorous as she thought it would be. So now she still has the option to sell it again at a profit because a variance was passed and an ADU was placed there. My concern is, is that the rights of Longmont citizens and neighbors, neighborhoods trying to stay strong are being compromised. So what's happening is the citizens of Longmont are going to be priced right out of their own city and/or neighborhood. And, and that's a real concern. In the Historic East Side Neighborhood, we have a lot of small homes like this one, but some of them have large lots. So we're going to see a lot more ADUs in our future, okay? So I'm going to just quickly plant one more seed before I leave in that the new code now will allow multiple residents of Longmont. So if I was a land baron and had a lot of money, and I'm a citizen of Longmont, I could buy five pieces of property and put five ADUs in the back of them. And so what you're going to do is you're just going to change the chance for affordable and attainable housing, and you're going to change the dynamics of Longmont's oldest neighborhood. Where the oldest neighborhood, we have, this house is a quaint house. This is where the first people came and didn't have money. And as you get closer to Collier and Emery Street, you've got bigger homes. And then when they made it big, they went to the west side. No more east side, we're going west. So we're trying, we're pushing for a conservation overlay zone and trying to keep the integrity of Longmont's humble beginnings and allowing people to have ADUs. But we're concerned about the, the fact that out-of-state resident, non-residents have the option to go through this process ahead of us and even through the process when there is a rule that you have to live in the house. I mean, are you going to verify that she lives there? Is there a set amount of time that she has to live there? If you pass this variance for her ADU that she's going to live in because she's under the old code? So these are things to think about. Who's a priority? Longmont citizens or out-of-state residents? Thank you, I appreciate the job you do.
Thank you, Sharon. At this time, nobody else has signed up, but we do invite anybody from the public who would like to come forward and say something to come forward. We just ask that you state your name and your address for the record. Hello?
My name is Noam Feinberg, and I live at 303 Kaufman Street.
Oh, lift it up.
My name is Noam Feinberg, and I live at 303 Kaufman Street in Longmont.
Go ahead.
I am the woman, her name is Susan Sulemy. She is my mother. She's the one developing the property. And I'm her son, and I currently live in a large building, it's a pretty old building, with, I don't know, like, between like 20 and 40 other residents. I live there because it's the cheapest place in the area. I was backpacking for a long time and settling down in Colorado, looking for a nice place to live, and everything was reasonably expensive. This is the best place I could get for the price, and I was planning on moving into this area after it was constructed. It would be slightly more expensive than where I'm currently at, but not by much, and significantly nicer, and not as expensive as the other places. So I don't know how much that's relevant, but just to address the concern of it affecting Longmont residents and whether someone would actually be staying there for that party, that would be me. That would be my interest. Okay. I could answer other questions, or I don't have anything else to say.
No questions.
Okay, cool.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? Seeing nobody else come forward, I'll go ahead and close out the public invited to be heard. We will now move to questions, comments, motions from the commission. Does anybody have anything? I will go ahead, and I do have a question. Nathan?
Yes.
Do we have any requirements that the principal, the principal residence has to be the person, has to be the owner of the property in order to request the ADU?
So, as was mentioned, we're kind of in a unique time related to ADUs. So the city council recently adopted some new rules to bring our local regulations into conformance with the state law. So there are kind of two sets of requirements to keep in mind here. Under our previous regulations that were in place at the time that this development application was submitted, the land development code in Section D, so if I recall correctly, I included the development standards as part of the backup material. So if you, you can open up that attachment, and then Section D, a few sections under the section that applied to the size of the ADU. That's the section on limit on sale, tenancy, and occupancy. So that's the section that applied under the previous code. You see the number one numeral there states that the property owner shall occupy the principal or accessory dwelling unit. It doesn't say anything about whether or not the property owner shall occupy that principal or accessory dwelling unit at the time of the application. So the way that we have interpreted that rule to apply is that we allow, we allow a property owner to submit an application to go through, to begin the review process. So sometimes with site plans like this, they can take quite a long time to go through a review process. We don't necessarily require everything to be met at the time that the application was submitted. That's part of the review process. We identify areas where the request didn't meet the code standards. We then provide comments saying that you need to, you know, you applicant need to change your plan to meet, you know, these standards or whatever applies. In this case, we would allow the applicant to submit the application, go through the review process, but we wouldn't issue any approval of the site plan or any final building permits until that requirement was satisfied. So we would require the applicant to provide proof of ownership, proof of occupancy of the principal dwelling or the ADU. So that was under the current code, or the old code announced why we accepted the application for the ADU and the variance at the time. The applicant did also provide their, as we noted, this is one of our review comments during the review process, the applicant responded to that comment to note that was their intention to occupy the ADU. So from our perspective, that satisfied that requirement and allowed us to move it forward. But nevertheless, we wouldn't issue any final certificates of occupancy or building permits for the proposed ADU without proof that those residency or occupancy standards have been met. Under the new code requirement, that's kind of changed a little bit. So under the new code requirements, we cannot even accept an application from an applicant for an ADU until they, as part of the submittal material, they would include their residency and occupancy, proof of occupancy. So that could include bank statements or utility bills and a government-injured ID, anything to prove that the property owner, as listed on the property records, also matches, you know, can prove that they occupy one of those, that they occupy the principal structure, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jordan?
This question's for Nathan Grant, or, sorry, is that better?
Thank you.
This question's for either Nathan you or Grant. I was wondering, do we have any color on what is the intent behind the 50% limit?
Yes, actually. So when council was initially adopting these rules, there was a discussion of how large an ADU should be. And there was concern that with some, with some residential structures, there's a very large basement that's all underground. And if we included that square footage of the underground, of the underground basement in the total allowable square footage that you could base your percentage off of, then that would mean that an ADU would all be above ground and would be much larger than what the intent of, you know, having these accessory kind of structures that are smaller than the primary structure. So there was concern that subterranean or underground square footage could be added to the total square footage of what an ADU percentage could be based on.
And it was just a flat 50%. So if this had been a 3,000 square foot home, we wouldn't have even be seeing this here.
Correct. And that's one of the things I noted in the staff report, that there are other ways, there are other ways that the applicant could comply with the code. One way would be to expand the footprint of the primary structure. We felt like that was less compatible. So any addition to that historic home, it's, I don't think it's a, well, it's not a historic designated home, but that old home, any addition to that would change the character of that home. So we felt like that was moving in the opposite way of creating more compatibility. But that was, that is another option for the applicant at the time, is that they could have proposed an additional 400, I think it's like 400 or 500 square feet addition onto the house. And then that would have allowed this ADU to be converted by right.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think continuing that question a little bit of different options. So an ADU is a use by right on this property under the current code at up to 404 square feet, if I'm reading through the notes correct?
According to the size of the primary dwelling unit, so that's 808 divided by half, that's 404.
So the applicant has a use by right, following the code, of course, to tear down this existing unit and put a 404 square foot unit in this spot?
Under the old code, yes.
Okay.
The caveat to that is that the new code allows by right between 500 and 800 square foot ADU. So if, so without going into too much of a side quest here, if the applicant withdrew this application, they would submit under the new code standard, so all the new code standards would apply. And that means that the applicant would have the by right option to construct an ADU of up to 800 square feet.
And we, and, sorry, I'm looking at numbers here. We're considering this 572 square foot, but with also the 332 square foot of loft space.
Correct.
That city staff is, that the applicant doesn't like that calculation, but those are the, those are at least the numbers we're talking about.
Correct. When we were doing our interpretation, or when we were doing our analysis, we've historically looked at all of the, all of the area, all of the area within the ADU that would be used as the ADU. So it's slightly different than the building code standard. We don't necessarily look at habitable space in the same way. We're trying to get an idea of how much of an impact or how much of a use is going to be, is going to take place with the development, with the development activity. So that's why we chose to include the loft area in the total square footage.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, the loft area, as we define it, this is 800, sorry, as the city staff defines it, is 898 square feet total.
Correct.
Okay. And you're saying under the new code, and I'm sorry to keep doing this, up between 500 and 800 is allowed?
Correct.
So the loft could be smaller, but everything else would be by right?
Correct. If the applicant-
Under the new code.
Under the new code. If the, correct, if the applicant redesigned the loft area to with, remove 98 square feet-
Yeah.
And the application would then be in conformance with the standards of the ADU, and a variance would not be required.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? I guess, for me, this is kind of, it seems like in one case, they're asking that we go under the original code, so such that they don't have to prove the ownership of a resident initially, but then they want to use, they would prefer to use the new code. Here's the problem I have. The variance says, let me bring this up, because it's very specific, and I know we've come across this before. Item E for the variance, variance should not be granted for a self-imposed hardship.
Correct.
You interpret this, city interprets this as not being self-imposed because the garage was built under an old code where there was no size limits for garages. My problem is, I view this as a hardship because as a use of a garage, that's true. As a use of an ADU, to me, it presents their hardship. I mean, they, they've decided to make an ADU out of it, but it's self-imposed because they're deciding to make an ADU out of it. As a garage, it's fine, but as an ADU, to me, when I look at Section E, it seems to me that it's self-imposed because they're choosing to convert a garage to an ADU. That's where I personally have a problem with this. So I look forward, if anybody else has anything they want to chime in, any other questions they want to ask, but that's where I'm hung up with this. I mean, I also, and I know in the past, we have had one other item come up to us before, that there was an issue where the applicant was somebody who lived, actually, it was in uncorporated Boulder County that was actually surrounded by Longmont. And we could not, ended up being that we could not consider it because they were not a city of Longmont resident, and they were trying to do something with the second residence. To me, this is kind of the same thing. I mean, I wish we had some kind of proof, some kind of, something from the city that shows that the current resident of the primary residence is actually living in Longmont. I mean, that's, those are the two issues I have currently with this particular application. Jeremy?
Thank you, Chair Pollan. Close my voice. Jeremy Turell, Assistant City Attorney. Just to remind the commission, the accessory dwelling unit is allowed by right. So the only question before the commission tonight is the variance concerning the size. Everything else is administrative decision determined by the staff.
Okay.
So the only consideration is whether or not the, the standard specifically not exceeding 50% of the finished air above ground floor unit of the Princeberry dwelling to allow for 898 square feet. That's the variance, that's the decision before the commission tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clearing that up. So that's one of my two items off the board, at least. So anyways, I do look forward, if there's anybody else on the commission who has any thoughts, any comments. Commissioner Lang?
Under the old, under the old standards, on Section D, Nathan, it's, there's one, two, and three, and the third one says accessory dwelling units may be leased or rented for tenancies of less than 30 days as a short-term rental only when the property owner is present. Does that mean occupied, that like the property owner would be in the main house? Is that how I should read that? Jeremy?
So, good question, Commissioner Lang. We're not considering any short-term rental at this point. Again, the only criteria is whether or not the variance for the size. So occupancy use for a short-term rental is not a decision before the commission tonight.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, that that would be a consideration and a decision, but it's just more of a general question, because I could see it, I'd hate to get, if they did get the variance and it went forward, and then next thing you know, it's an Airbnb, that would not be great.
It wouldn't be allowed. Accessory dwelling units are not allowed to be short-term rentals under a code, either the new or the old. So you couldn't have that. The only time you could have a short-term rental on the lot would be if the owner occupied the ADU as their primary dwelling unit. They could then short-term rent the primary, actual primary structure. That's the only way you would get a short-term rental on that lot.
Okay.
It could never be the ADU, though, for the short-term rental.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan?
I'm just going to put thoughts out here, kind of thinking aloud. I'm looking at the, one of the variance criteria of not impacting the surrounding properties. And I'm kind of thinking that, well, okay, you know, we've got this 800 square foot old house in this historic neighborhood, but I know it's not a historic property. And we got this garage, it's been there since the 80s or whatever. It doesn't seem like to me, at least from that standpoint, I understand about the self-imposed, that's maybe up for debate here. But it doesn't seem to me that the character of the neighborhood is changing here because we're not adding or really modifying a structure to that grade of an extent. However, if we wanted to, if the applicant had gone a different route and done a, an 800 square foot addition to the house, assuming it met all code, it would never even seen this process. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that would have been, and we, I think we've all seen some modifications to old homes that are, let's just say, maybe not in best keeping with the neighborhood or whatever. But to me, this feels pretty minimally invasive, and then it's also kind of hard, I know we have to judge it on its, on the code at the time it was submitted, but I, we also know that the code is changing to allow a greater amount of square footage anyway. So if this were submitted, again, with a very minor change, maybe the loft footprint, again, we wouldn't see it, right?
That's correct.
Assuming it was under the 800 square feet total.
That's correct.
Okay. So my, my thought is, I'm kind of leaning towards approving based on just the, it doesn't seem like it would be that big of an impact to the neighborhood. But I'm open to discussion on the self-imposed part, which I think is the hardest consideration here.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Saunders?
Thank you, Chair Pollan. Okay, so I married my math teacher, so I put math off to the side. So if you can help me with this just for a moment. The primary dwelling is 808. So by right, without a variance, the accessory dwelling unit would need to be 50% of that.
Correct. Under the previous code that this was originally submitted?
Yes. Thank you for the asterisks. I appreciate that. So 404 is where we're headed.
Correct.
And, but that's not the main floor. The main floor of the garage currently is 550.
Approximately 550 square feet, I believe.
So loft, let's not even talk about the loft for a second, that's extra, but, so even the garage floor would not meet that half.
Correct. Any conversion of the existing footprint of that structure to an ADU under the previous code standards because of the size of it would require the variance.
Okay. So they already need to ask, the applicant needs to ask for a variance to just get the 550. And so since they were asking for the variance, we added a loft, potentially.
That's actually a question, I believe, for the applicant. We didn't make the recommendation that they add. that they add, add the loft. We decided to include the square footage of the loft in the total calculation.
Okay.
So I can defer to the applicant to answer questions as to why they, why they proposed a loft area as the-
Let's do that now, because I'm interested why the, the loft is a nice space, right? It makes the, there's more habitable space and so, yes, how did that come about to add the loft, we were, if you're already over the fifty percent?
So the, the structure actually already has a storage loft in it. It would need to be reinforced as part of the building permit to be structurally sound for more storage. It's pretty fragile, I guess, right now. So it already exists and we're just looking to kind of restructure it and actually reposition it. Right now, it's located on the east end of the structure and we're proposing it on the west end instead. But, so, so it was always part of the scope, if that makes sense. We also never considered it square footage because it isn't habitable, it, it doesn't meet the definition by building code of habitable space, not really realizing that the land use code worked on it differently.
Yes, but it's nicer, right?
Yeah.
You would go up there and hang out, opposed to just putting boxes. It is nicer.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, you would be more comfortable up there than I would.
Absolutely, I could have more friends over. Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you for that. So my concern is the self-imposed, I do lean more towards Commissioner Pollen on that, because you do have the choice. The applicant does have the choice whether or not to build an accessory dwelling unit. And we are in a new age, I agree with that. As our populations are getting older, this conversation is going to keep coming up. One of the biggest issues that we have here is compatibility. I am concerned that as this ADU gets nicer with the expanded space and the expanded loft, then the nineteen oh eight primary building doesn't look as nice anymore, or becomes as habitable, and then maybe that gets scraped off later on. Maybe, I don't know. Then we lose compatibility quite a bit. Those two buildings are no longer compatible by planning and zoning standards in my interpretation.
Sure.
If one is modernized and it doesn't have the same proportions as the primary, because now it's, the primary's eight hundred and eight, is that right? And so now the ADU is now, how many total with the loft?
I think it's eight ninety-two.
So it's now more than the primary?
Yeah, based on that.
So that, that is a concern for me. It no longer then fits in the definition of the accessory dwelling unit for me. If it has more square footage, it's really gone past that fifty percent. So I'm leaning towards no on the variance for this because it's asking for so much more past the fifty percent.
Yeah, I, if I can respond to the self-imposed hardship portion of that, I, I think the, the self-impo, the, the concept there is that the, the idea to change it into an ADU is a self-imposed hardship, not the size of the structure, but the, it's allowed to be an ADU. ADUs are used by right, so they should be allowed to put an ADU in this location. They do have, I suppose, the option of scraping the structure and putting up a new structure in its place that would be, under the old code, four hundred and four square feet. I think that would be significantly more impactful to the neighborhood than just maintaining the existing structure. So from our point of view, the, the five hundred and seventy-six square foot building is actually less impactful than the four hundred and four square foot building would be because it's there. It's existing, it's all existing materials. We're not tearing something down just to put something back. From an environmental standpoint, it's adaptive reuse, which is better than new construction. So that's kind of where we're coming from on this in terms of, we don't feel it's a self-imposed hardship in terms of the square footage. It's, or, but we, it's not a self-imposed hardship in terms of the idea of putting on an ADU because an ADU is allowed. The hardship comes from the size, and that's not something that we've imposed. The five hundred and seventy-six square feet is an existing condition. The, the loft being added to that, again, I disagree with that as square footage because it's not habitable space. And it, in a condition, it does exist today, it's just on the other side of the building. So, I guess, if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate coming back to me again. Nathan, a couple questions. I, I like hypotheticals to explore some of this. Jeremy's laughing. Under the current code, or I'm sorry, yes, under the current as adopted code, not under what's, what this is proposed under. If this application, if this variance is not approved, can the applicant by right put a, another structure on the site between that five hundred and eight hundred square feet, assuming they, you know, meet setbacks and everything and meet all the other criteria of the code? So they would have the primary residence at eight hundred and eight square feet, they would have this garage that exists and an ADU?
That is a tricky question to answer, I, without having all the, all the math in front of us.
Yeah.
But we also do have other standards for accessory, other accessory structures. So we have, I believe it's-
I have to pull up my code ref-
I'd have to pull up my code reference here, but we do, we have another section, just like right above it, that says that all accessory, all accessory structures on a property cannot exceed more than seventy-five percent, I believe, of the, of the square footage of the primary.
But this would be an existing structure, so does that fall-
So I, so that's why I think it's a little tricky to answer that question.
Okay.
I don't know under, given the size of the existing and if there, if there is enough area. Sidebar, hang on.
Just a quick clarification for accessory dwelling units under the state law, we have to allow an ADU between five hundred and eight hundred square feet, period, as long as meets the setback requirements allowed by law. So that seventy-five percent wouldn't be applicable to the ADU.
Okay.
So they could drop a five hundred square foot ADU with the garage and we don't have to worry about the seventy-five percent.
Assuming the setbacks and everything else?
Assuming the other setbacks are allowed by law.
Yeah, I'm going to the edge here of the-
Yes.
Question, okay.
Yeah. And then they could also, I should just note, the eight hundred can be exceeded if the home is larger. So it's eight hundred or fifty percent of the existing, the primary structure. So if there was a two thousand square foot house on that lot, they could have a thousand square foot ADU by right, under the new code.
Thank you, no, it's, that's really helpful. Completely separate question. Under the self-imposed hardship, the staff analysis here says the proposed conversion is not a self-imposed hardship. How did staff come to that conclusion? And, and why was that the conclusion staff raised, since obviously this is a question we all have here about that criteria?
Correct. So when we were looking at this, we're basing this self-imposed hardship based off of the by right standard. So an ADU isn't allowed use in order to convert that structure to, to an ADU. It, that structure in and of itself is too large to, to be able to comply with the codes that were in place at the time. And since it wasn't a structure that was, that was constructed by the applicant, we felt like it was, we felt that it was not a self, that the applicant did not build that structure and then ask for it to be converted. It's a structure that's been on the property that was legally constructed in the standards at the time that it was originally constructed. So everything about that current accessory, that current garage was built legally, so to convert that to an ADU was considered a, not a self-imposed hardship.
I'm, I'm still struggling with that point, so I, if I go through all these other criteria for variances, I'm comfortable with what's presented here by, by the applicant. I'm, you know, I'm not going to go through every one of them, but, you know, for not adversely impacting properties, doesn't nullify or impair the purpose of the code, et cetera, that, all those seem like this meets it. And it, it does seem like this is the least deviation that affords relief and certainly causes the least impact to grant the variance versus the other hypotheticals that we've talked about here. It's that self-imposed hardship that I'm still struggling with since we have to meet all of them and I'm, I don't, I, I'm just not a hundred percent there, even though I kind of want to be. So I don't know if there's other information or other, you know, I, I don't know if either staff or applicant have any other information they want to put in the record that we could use to help with that decision.
I can defer to the applicant on that, but my staff report is, is the record that we can add.
I, I was trying to come up with something on that three-second walk. I mean, essentially, it, it comes back down to the, the property owner is allowed to have an ADU on this property. We're not asking for a variance for an ADU. We're asking for a variance because of the size of the structure. So we have the ability to turn this into an ADU and lop off a little hundred square foot corner and not do a loft, if the loft counts. So that would be allowed by right and we can move forward. So the ADU is not, the, the fact that it is an ADU isn't the problem, that's the, the condition that we're creating. The condition that's already in existence is the size of the structure, and that's what we're trying to ask for a variance to overcome. That's not a condition that we've created. There are solutions for, for like most built conditions that you could just not build it. That's why, from my point of view, that's why the variance process exists, to deal with these weird conditions. So if, if the, the question is, is always, well, you just, could just not do it. I mean, that is always an option and, and probably is worth mentioning at every variance application. But in this case, the use is allowed, the size is, is appropriate, it would fit inside that structure, we're not growing the structure. We're just trying to use what we've got.
No problem. Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Earl?
So just one thing that you, you had mentioned there, and I, I don't remember if it was you or Nathan earlier that made the comment, you know, you're allowed to make this four hundred and four square feet today, and you can do so in the existing structure, but you don't develop, or you, you don't build out that full space, but that was not preferred from an enforcement standpoint? Was that what was stated earlier in actually making sure?
That's the way it's, it's expressed in the staff report, yes. Essentially, what you'd have to do is just carve out a portion of it and make that, say, a storage structure, a storage area for the, the primary structure, or, or maybe a garage bay, something along those lines. I, I suppose those are options, but they, they significantly impact the usability of the space.
Sure.
And from an enforcement standpoint, how, how would a future owner who decides they don't like this limitation, or aren't even aware of the variance, but when they buy it, not just connect that back in and, and create the storage that the ADU desperately needs because now it's undersized?
Nathan, anything to add on that from, from the staff, I guess the enforcement staff standpoint?
I think, again, historically, we just, historically, we have not supported interior, just like using a portion of, of an interior space as an ADU. Again, as he noted, from an enforcement standpoint, once the ADU has been granted, the occupant is allowed to live there. We don't do inspections after, at any point after the, you know, the initial occupancy request. So it would be very difficult for us to be able to track whether or not, like if they just cordoned off an area of the interior and said, we're not going to use this space, we wouldn't be able to determine whether or not that was in fact not being, not being used at some, you know, throughout the course of the ADU's lifespan.
Understood, okay. I appreciate that extra color from both of you. I, I, I still struggle with self-imposed hardship. I'm more in the camp of understanding why it's not necessarily a self-imposed hardship. So I, I appreciate that color that was given.
Can you quickly bring up the overhead of the neighborhood where this is at? The, the, what I'm wondering is, so, and, and I don't know what the current use, oh, yes. So I don't know what the current use of the garage is, I don't know if they're using it as a garage. I guess, and my question is, is this going to affect parking around that neighborhood? I mean, currently, what are, it would have to be street parking then for both units because you're giving up the garage of the one. And my question is, do the two fronting streets both allow for parking?
I believe they're, so they're both, so Martin and Fifth Avenue are both local streets. I believe there's on-street parking that is allowed there.
For both?
Yes.
Okay.
In terms of the design, so there is a sidewalk. So in terms of the off-street parking allotment, so let me scroll down here, you can see this better. So there's an existing sidewalk and some area between, there's an unpaved area between the existing structure and the sidewalk, and then an area between the sidewalk and the-
Those dirt areas.
Yes, those dirt areas. They could, the applicant could convert, or the commission could require as a condition of approval of this, that the applicant use that space as a, as parking area. But it's proposed in the site plan to be paved, I believe. If I can go back to the, this area. So you can see here that it's proposed to be paved area. We don't have any, separately, we don't have any minimum on-street parking standards, so the applicant's not required to park the ADU either, so.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I'm still with the self-imposed hardship because just because you have a build, a garage there, it could mean, if, if we use that, then any garage of any size could become an ADU. It, it could be something that was two times the size of the house. I'm just not comfortable with that logic saying that you're granted to have an ADU, therefore, the garage that's on the site should be allowed, rather than either A, they build another unit, which I, I agree, that isn't the best scenario. What I truthfully think is the best scenario in this case is, they reapply under the new code, which grants them up to eight hundred, and then somehow we, they figure out how to get the total space. If, if the city is, if, if nothing's changed with the city and the city still considers loft space as part of the living space as far as calculations, that they somehow work to get that to the eight hundred. I mean, that's my personal preference, therefore, we don't have to worry about the variance. I do agree, I mean, I agree with the concept. The garage, perfect use for an ADU. I even agree with the fact that the loft space, I mean, however that's interpreted, I, I mean, it's not added footprint space to the lot space. So I'm not really, I'm personally not married to the fact that the loft space is counted as part of the, the living space. What I'm concerned about is the fact that it's, it's a variance, and I've never liked the way we've, the variance has been written, that, that one part of the code, because it's, it's thou shalt not, if it's a self-imposed hardship. And to me, just because you're allowed to have an ADU on that lot, doesn't mean that, that ADU has to be the garage. And the garage doesn't meet our, the current or the old code for what we allow for ADUs. That's where I'm at with this. So I'm not, for this, I mean, I like the concept, I just find that with that variance clause of a hardship, I can't get over that barrier myself. So look forward to any other viewpoints from the commission. Well, it looks like what I'm going to go ahead, and I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion then. I make a motion that we approve PZR twenty twenty-five, five C, a denial of a variance to land development code section fifteen oh four oh four oh C one, B two. Do I have a second? What?
To approve the denial.
To approve the denial, yep. Commissioner Saunders?
I second the approved to deny.
We have a motion, we have a second. Open a backup for any discussion. Commissioner Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm there with you, actually. I really don't want to vote against this. I don't want to deny this. But I don't see, in, in the criteria that it's not a self-imposed hardship, I like everything about this. I want this to be in this neighborhood. I don't see it meeting the code and what we have to- I don't see it meeting the code and what we have to follow. So, I appreciate you getting to that point, and I apologize that we have to do that.
No other comments, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Commissioner Lang.
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan.
Nay.
Commissioner Wang. Vice Chair Poland.
Yes.
Commissioner Saunders.
Yes.
Commissioner Earl. Chair, that motion for denial passes five to two.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, gender item seven B, variance to land development code. Appeal process announcement, this item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any agreed party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the planning zoning commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. All appeals must be in writing, must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period. The appeal period begins Thursday, June nineteenth at eight AM and ends Wednesday, June twenty-fifth at five PM. Thank you to the applicant, thank you to the city for the presentation. Yes.
It's four to two.
Four to two.
Correction, that is, that passes four to two, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to final call invited to be heard. This is a, a chance, uh, the last, the second chance in this meeting for members of the public to uh, make comments about items that are not in front of the commission as quasi-judicial items. Seeing nobody come forward, items from the commission. Seeing that we don't have anybody, uh, items from the commission, we don't have the council representative Rodriguez here today. Items from Planning Director Grant Penland.
Oh, good evening again, uh, I apologize, I don't have a fancy slide, not that they were all that fancy anyway, but uh, just wanted to kinda give a look ahead for the commission, uh, July, August. Um, we have uh, what looks like a conditional use site plan, uh, as well as a preliminary plat and an annexation proposal, most likely gonna land, again, July, August timeframe. Um, the latter two I mentioned, most likely in August. We also have, um, as has been previously referenced, a URM amendment review, uh, essentially a compliance review uh, for the comp plan. So ha- have a, a four, four applications that are kind of in the process. Um, I mentioned to the group earlier, uh, that uh, we don't know the exact timeframe, but just wanted to give a heads up. Uh, did wanna also reference that, uh, the special meeting July twenty-third, uh, just due to vacations, et cetera. Uh, we most likely won't have that, so, again, just kind of a preview of what's coming. Um, happy to share more when we get more definitive timelines in terms of, uh, when those, when those items will land on the docket, so, and I think that's all from me this evening.
Okay, and then we are in adjournment.